Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the February 4, 2025 City Council meeting to order at 7:30 PM. The public is encouraged to join the meeting online or by phone at the numbers printed on the agenda which can be found on the city's website at www.diamondbar.ca.gov, or in person, Main Auditorium, South Coast Air Quality Management District. We have also allowed public comments to be submitted in advance to the city clerk. If any were received, they will be noted for the record when we get to the public comment period. This meeting is being recorded and by participating, you are given your permission to be televised. This meeting will be rebroadcast every Saturday and Sunday at 9:00 AM and alternate Tuesday at 8:00 PM, an archive for viewing on city's website at www.diamondbar.ca.gov. Now, please stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mayor Protem Steve Thai, and then please remain standing for the invocation by Pastor Tino Godova, United Church of Christ. Please stand up.
It's my privilege to lead the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the religion which stands one nation and with the God invisible, liberty, justice for all.
Let us pray. Dear Divine Spirit of Unity, we gather today in gratitude for the rich diversity that blesses our Diamond Bar community. We celebrate the multitude of cultures, languages, and traditions that shape our collective identity, grant us the wisdom to live with empathy and justice, embracing each person with respect and dignity. May we advocate tirelessly for equality, ensuring that every voice is heard and every individual is valued. As we celebrate Black History Month, we recognize the contributions and struggles of Black individuals throughout history. May their resilience and achievements inspire us to continue the fight for racial justice and equality. We stand in solidarity with our immigrant brothers and sisters. Help us to be their ally, speaking out against injustices and providing a welcoming and safe haven for all. Guide us to foster a Diamond Bar community that thrives on collaboration and understanding. May our actions reflect our commitment to building a future where everyone, regardless of their background, regardless of their skin color, can flourish. In their deliberations, may this council of Diamond Bar be guided by compassion and the desire to create inclusive, harmonious, and vibrant community. In your many and holy names, we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Please be seated. City Clerk Santana, please call the robe.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Chell?
I'm here.
Councilmember Lou?
Here.
Councilmember Lo?
I'm here.
Mayor Protem Thai?
Here.
Mayor Ting?
Here.
Thank you. City Manager Fox, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes to the agenda this evening.
The agenda is hereby approved. We don't have any special presentation or certificate today. And City Manager Fox, are there any reports?
There are no additional reports this evening.
Thank you. Next session is public comment. Public comment is the time reserved on each regular meeting agenda to provide an opportunity for members of the public to directly address the city, the council on concerned calendar items, or other matters of interest not on the agenda that are within the subject matters jurisdiction of the council. Although the city council values your comments, pursuant to the Brown Act, members of the city council or staff may briefly respond to public comments if necessary, but no extended discussion and no action on such matters may take place. There's a five minutes maximum time limit when addressing the city council. At this time, I will call up speakers who have submitted a speaker card first, then City Clerk Santana will ask those callers joining the teleconference who may wish to speak on the public comments. Now, I have received speaker cards from, first speaker, Mr. Bob Ma.
Hi, City Council. Okay, I was here just before Thanksgiving. You remember me? Okay, okay, I was here just before, I was here just before Thanksgiving. You remember me? It was regarding to the bush, wild bush in my area. Someone did contact me very quick from the public office, public safety. Unfortunately, no action was taken, so I'm coming here again to present the problem. I will first let me talk about, review the background, and then next I will talk about what the public safety told me, okay? Okay, so in my neighborhood, there are white bush, wild bush in the area. So this is the map here, okay? So this is Grand Avenue, and this is Diamond Bar Boulevard, and some of which is here, okay? So the area I'm talking about is right here, okay? In Los Diamond Bar is 900 block of Somewhere which Drive, okay? And this is the bigger picture of what that is, okay? So those are the bush. Actually, there's a power line coming here. It's a high-power line, high-power power line here is like a couple hundred kilowatt power line, okay? So it runs through here, and this is the front view where the bush is, okay? So, and let me tell you what the public safety told me, okay? Which I don't buy it, okay? So he told me that those bush are natural habitat, okay? So those are just drought-resistant habitat, California habitat. So they do no harm, okay? But look at what happened to the recent fire in Pacific Palace, say, and Eaton. Are you telling me those are not natural habitat? Everything that can burn, even my house, okay? Look at this, okay? Those are the dry bush you see, okay? And you see the power line here, okay? And here, you know, dry bush, okay? You can go take a look. And another thing he said, another thing he said is that the LA County have a ordinance, okay? The wild bush has to be 10 feet from the sidewalk and 100 feet from any structure, and he say that is following, is complying. He's not true. Look at here, okay? Look, this is the sidewalk, and this is the bush. I don't know what he's talking about, okay? And further, he said, he said, this area is private property, okay? So it's not Diamond Bar responsibility, okay? That's what he told me, okay? I agree. You look at Google Map, this is a private property. But how about here? You know, the power line one across here, this portion is private property too, but they are all clear. So what he say is not consistent. The bottom line is that it doesn't matter who owned it. Diamond Bar, the city of Diamond Bar has the responsibility of the safety of the people in our area here. We actually pay a special tax every year for our property. So there is a tax allocate for it, you know? So Diamond Bar have the power and financial resource. They can enforce a call, you know? I don't, it doesn't matter who owned it, you know? Diamond Bar, you had a city manager, right? You had a public safety, right? You know, it's up to them to come up with a plan, you know? I'm telling you, there's a problem here, you know? Someone called me, he's a low-level guy, okay? I don't need that, you know? I am a good citizen, you know? I, it's a disgrace talk to this low-level guy, you know? I need someone with a decision, okay? What else can I say? Okay? And he say, he also told me that about the power line, he also told me that the Southern California Edison do annual check up, you know, what is causing the fire, you know? I'm telling you the problem here. So we had to pay attention. Okay, my time is almost up. The bottom line is that Diamond Bar own us a safety, okay? If Diamond Bar is on notice now, okay? If Diamond Bar is not, is designed not to do anything, if...
Thank you, Mr. Ma. We appreciate your input, and we definitely will look into these safety issues. Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Mr. Neff Cortez from the Regional Chamber of Commerce.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, city staff, and residents of Diamond Bar. My name is Neff Cortez. I'm a vice president for the Regional Chamber of Commerce, San Gabriel Valley, and also 35-year resident of the city of Diamond Bar. I just wanted to speak on item 7.1 and in support of the approval of the agreement between City of Diamond Bar and Valley Vista Services for Residential Solid Waste Management Services, and also Waste Management Collection and Recycling Incorporated for Commercial Solid Waste Management Services. Valley Vista Services have been a, has been a longtime member in good standing with the Regional Chamber of Commerce, and I was just speaking with Josh Goldman with Waste Management, and we're looking forward to his engagement and his company's engagement with the Regional Chamber of Commerce. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ms. Cynthia Yu.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members, city staff, and members of audience. My name is Cynthia Yu from the Diamond Bar Library. Teens, please join us as we celebrate African-American and Black History Month by learning about artist Shawn Kimber, a talented African-American mathematician and quilter, who is acclaimed for her beautiful quilts and making a mixed media artwork inspired by her fiber art. Teens will also learn about our online resources for discovering and learning more about the important contributions of the African-American and Black history community. This program will take place on Monday, February 10 at 4:00 PM. Music helps baby's brain make more learning connections, build fine and growth motor skills, and teach social skills. Come join our baby band on Friday, February 14, 10, 15 AM. This program is for ages 0 to 3 with a parent or caregiver. Gather round and prepare to be amazed by these true stories of courageous Black women who stood up and traveled for love, adventure, fame, and fortune. On Wednesday, February 18 at 4:00 PM, Ina, the Sunshine Storyteller, will guide us on this incredible journey through interactive storytelling, music, and dance. This program is for ages seven and up with a parent or caregiver, and generously sponsored by the Diamond Bar Friends of the Library. February is also National Library Lovers Month. The library serves us more than a home for books. It's a place to develop professional skills, engage with the community in fun activities, and relax with a good story or movie. Visit Diamond Bar Library and leave a note about what you love about the library. One lucky winner will be chosen at random to win a tote bag filled with goodies. Please visit our website, lacountylibrary.org, for more information about our services and programs. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker call comes from Tarek Abdul.
Good evening. I'm here to talk a little bit about the safety and security of the residents in Diamond Bar. We have had a slew of break-ins every single day, every single day. They're not necessarily our house, thank God, but if you look at a lot of apps, there are plenty of neighborhood apps, including the Ring app. I'm sure, you know, some of you might have the Ring application. There's a lot of break-ins every single day being reported, and we don't really see any, you know, police cars or sheriffs, you know, patrolling the area. There was one literally two houses away from us back in December. They just ransacked the place, stole things. The sheriffs showed up and really didn't do much of anything, to be honest. In our house, we had a break-in about 25 years ago or so. It was just in the garage. They stole a couple of things. When the sheriffs showed up, they took fingerprints, they spent a lot of time with us, and did what is expected. In this case, they really didn't do anything at all. They didn't even bother taking fingerprints. My wife will speak a little bit more about the details of that event. I just remember growing up on the side of police cars. It always says, "To serve and protect." I don't know who's, is that still a thing now, or is it just gone? Because I don't know who they're protecting. When they say that, "Well, we can't really do anything about it, there was no injuries or any of that," are they waiting for that? Are we waiting for someone to get hurt, for somebody to be shot, in order for something to happen? Something just doesn't seem right about this. One of the things that, you know, draws Diamond Bar, again, you know, 25, geez, maybe even longer than that, 27 years ago, is, you know, obviously, the school district is great, but if the crime rate is going to continue going up, I just wonder what it's going to do to, you know, our ability as a city to attract younger families to come in because of the school district. We have a wonderful school district, as you all know already. People come from all over the place. Some people don't even live in Diamond Bar or Walnut, and they still send their kids over here because they have family members that they can use their addresses. You all know about that kind of stuff. But if people don't feel safe here, you know, the pastor, you know, God bless him, he said something about living with dignity. When I leave my house and I have to turn on as many lights as I possibly can, I crank up music all over the place in different parts of the house, so that way, if somebody drives by or somebody attempts to come into the house, they think somebody's home, so they leave. For the first time in my life, I'm thinking of actually purchasing a gun, but I don't want to do that because it's not my lifestyle, it's not my thing. And take an example, what if I actually use it and kill the guy, right? By the way, most of the time, it's three or four people at a time. What if I were to do that? Do you think those guys are going to talk, "Oh, man, we lost one of our guys," that he's going to walk away? Probably not. They'll probably target us, right? I'm going to live in fear for the rest of my life unless I move. So I don't know exactly what you folks can do, but I really hope that you can have some influence, maybe increasing patrol cars, whatever it is that you can do to help us feel safe in our own city without, you know, again, having to resort to violence of any kind, or having to do these things where I literally turn up music, like I installed speakers so I can crank them up as loud as I possibly can every time we leave the house, so... Oh, I'm sorry, it wasn't good enough? All right, let me start from the beginning. No, just kidding. Anyway, I hope you heard me. My wife always tells me that I'm very loud and too loud, so I hope you heard me even without the microphone, but anyway, that's really just what I wanted to present, so thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. We heard you clear. Next speaker is Nata Abdul.
Oh, don't worry, I'm short. It's okay, it'll be fine. Hello, Honorable Mayor, Honorable City Council Members. I appreciate all that you do for our city. My name is Noha Abdul. I'm Tarek's wife. We've been longtime residents of the city of Diamond Bar for 28 years. Prior to that, we were in the city of Walnut for nine years. And again, like he said, this is a beautiful community, great school district. We raised three boys here, have always felt safe, always, always. But lately, the amount of insane amount of burglaries that have been happening in our city, it's just unfathomable. Two of our neighbors' houses have been broken into across the, literally across the street from us. They came and broke into this elderly lady's home and just ransacked the place. And then our other neighbor, who is actually here and he will be speaking, I hope, two houses down from us, they came and targeted their house, and then when all the neighbors pulled down from their Ring cameras immediately, all the images, and we gave them to the cops, the car, the cops were able to find, they were able to trace the car two miles away, and the cop, I was like, "Okay, well, can you arrest the guy?" The police officer told me, "Ma'am, it's not like in the movies." I swear to you, those were his words. "It's not like in the movies. This car has to be involved in X number of burglaries before we have a case," or something to that effect, and I was just blown away. I was like, "Well, how many more burglaries have to happen in the neighborhood before you can arrest these people? They're terrorizing us. This is the first time that I truly feel not safe. Our home property values are going to depreciate. If I could, I would move. If interest rates were lower, I would be out of here, but unfortunately, we can't do anything about it. We can't leave our house without, we constantly have to have all the lights on, speakers blasting everywhere, music everywhere, the TV going, just so when, you know, our house gets hit by these people, then it'll appear like somebody's home. What kind of a lifestyle is this going to be? I have an elderly mom that lives with me. She's afraid when we have to go somewhere together, she's afraid to be at home by herself. She would rather go be at my sister's in Duarte than to stay at home by herself. And one time we did that, we came home and literally the entire house lights were on because she's afraid. I'm asking you, I'm begging you to please, please have more patrol, police patrols, do something about this. We're being terrorized in our own backyards, in our own homes, and we're helpless. So can you please do something? We pay a lot of taxes. Please have Walnut sheriffs do something about this. I'm begging you. As soon as we get a Ring message, I'm constantly like, you know, looking at my Ring app and zooming in, and it's, this is not a way to live. We have neighborhood watch groups going, and we're trying our best, but we're asking you for your help, please. So, thank you so much for your time. I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker call comes from Joe Marican.
Hello, my name is Joe Marican. I'm a 15-year Diamond Bar resident, and like Tarek and Noha, we're in the same neighborhood. And the reason we moved here 15 years ago were for the education of our two boys, 22 and 17-year-old, and it's been a great experience being part of the Diamond Bar and Walnut communities. But as they expressed, we were one of those residents that were burglarized on December 18th, and I was on travel, business travel, and I get this call from my wife, who's frantically headed home because our alarm company called, and she basically got home and realized the place that most of us here consider the safest place or the haven for us, our home, has been just completely torn into shambles in nine to 10 minutes that she was away. And clearly, after, you know, our lovely neighbors, who all came together, tried to piece together what happened, what transpired, it was a very targeted event. They're very organized. They had Wi-Fi jammers for the alarm, the cameras that we have. So technically speaking, our cameras didn't catch it, our neighbors' cameras caught it after the fact. They were casing and figuring out patterns for when I was home and I wasn't, when my wife was home and when she wasn't, or anyone was home. Subsequent events that our neighbors mentioned about, all were targeted incidents. They knew when the residents were gone for a brief period or a longer period, whether it was for Chinese New Year celebration or whatever it was, and they targeted. What's worse is, in some incidents, they were armed, and if us or anyone with younger kids had left them... And if us or anyone with younger kids had left them at home, I mean teenagers, I mean, they would be in harm's way. So I think you've heard enough of what we were trying to convey to you. And this is the main point. The effects of this, as Noha mentioned, is, for my wife, she does not feel safe. And if she doesn't feel safe, her only alternative right now is to move away from this community. And that's a possibility. But we're not going to be the only ones. Most of us, because of the amount of damage or stolen jewelry and other things, would claim with the insurance, that statistic will eventually show up. And it'll affect Diamond Bar and Walnut in terms of insurability or rates. And that'll collectively affect everyone in this community. So one of the things, if it's a worthwhile investment for the community and for the future residents, not just us, is to invest more into the sheriff and the policing of the community. Clearly, these folks have targeted and know that it's worth their while because there is no vigilance outside of the residents from the police or show of police force. And I think it would immensely help to have that. And I would strongly recommend that, as a council, that you look into this matter. We'll have other neighbors show up in subsequent meetings. And I hope you take this into, you know, clear consideration because it is going to have an effect on the community as it progresses. Thank you very much.
Mr. Morikin, I don't normally jump in at public comment, but I do want to understand what you said about being targeted. Do you feel like the Morikin family was targeted? Or just a particular area in Diamond Bar that you and the Abudes live in, and your neighbors?
No. When I meant targeted, I meant Diamond Bar communities. And it's not just our particular neighborhood. We can, in fact, in a future meeting, we'll give you some more data so you see it as communities all around Diamond Bar. And when I say targeted, they're very organized. And if you, if the police would come in and really go through the data that all of us have submitted, including camera and everything, they are watching for patterns. They know they have kids. People go out, run errands. And in brief periods, they're coming in. So it's not targeting just our family. I meant the entire neighborhood. And part of the main reason, if you'd allow me to state this, is this has increased since the freeway access has increased. The on-ramp, the, not just the ongoing expansion, but on Lemon Avenue for our community. But it's similar for other communities on Walnut side as well, because we see that as well, that they can quickly get away after an incident. And that is a problem, but the, only you can't shut down an exit or an on-ramp or off-ramp. But really, clearly, if there is enough show of force, as we say, right, then there would be, we as a community are looking out for each other. We tell each other when we're going on vacation, just to have that extra eye. But there needs to be more blue and white policing.
Thank you for the input.
Our next speaker is Carol Lee Tran.
Hello, Honorable Mayor and Council Members. I actually didn't plan on speaking, but I've decided to say a couple of things. I moved to Diamond Bar Walnut area in 2020. Most of our neighbors are actually older, who all raise their kids there. So we're actually one of the newer, or not younger, but, you know, somewhat younger, because I have young children. So when we moved here for the, I mean, the districts, but also we moved here because it's known to be one of the safest cities. And in 2020, we're really happy to find ourselves here. Recently, as you've heard, there have been a lot of burglaries. And it's in broad daylight. It's not even at nighttime. It's not, it's just like, I was driving home, and then I saw all these people outside. And I found out that it was like, it just happened in minutes. And it was like, you know, a block away, but like, you could see everything. And it was like 2:00 in the afternoon. And I was just like, okay, like, it doesn't even matter if you leave your lights on because it's daytime. I have two young kids too. And to think that this is happening in our, you know, wonderful city is really sad. And to be honest, I don't see any patrol or I don't see anything happening. I don't even see any police or sheriffs like around after the incident either. And I work from home most of the time, so I would see some of this kind of activity, but I don't. And so I'm just, I came here to support some of our neighbors. And I just wanted to just add to that. And also, because of the increase in the activity, our, we like kind of got together, not got together, but we created a WeChat group to just be able to like talk to each other and say like, "Oh, this happened to my neighbor." And we kind of have an idea. And then we share video footage with each other because at least we can like look out for each other because it seems like no one's looking out for us. So it's been helping in some aspect because we're all like more vigilant. But I mean, what can we do except just look out for each other? And so we're here to just let you know what's going on. And just so you know, I know it's probably happening in different areas, but specifically, I'm from the South Point area. So like Lemon, Hollow Pine, Willow Bud, and going up to South Point. So we called our like little group like Diamond Bar Walnut, South Point, or something like that. So yeah, so thank you for listening.
Thank you. That's all the speaker card I have. I see a captain there. Captain, can you give us an update?
All right. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. So this is the second week of citizens coming up here and expressing their concerns about the safety of our city. Today, I came prepared with just some numbers. I know numbers aren't really good if you've been burglarized. Just real facts before I even start this. At the Diamond Bar birthday party, which my family and I attended, my house was burglarized while I was there. So I know how it feels. I have cameras. I have neighbors that watch. And they drove around the neighborhood and they picked my house and blew up every room I had, threw everything on the floor. We had, you know, I have three young kids, so I get what everyone's talking about. And it's awful when it happens. But just getting back to Diamond Bar, we do, we do look at crime. We don't just blindly go day to day. We have crime analysts at our station. We also have special assignment deputies that are paid for by the city of Diamond Bar that read reports every single day. We have crime mapping where we can look at the different areas where the crime is occurring. It will also break it down by day, by hour. We can, we can look for trends and we can address trends. When you approve your budget, you guys leave additional money in the budget for operations in addition to the yearly budget that you spend on us. If there are, if we do see trends, it's very easy for me to contact Dan and Ryan and request that funding to do suppression operations, which we have been doing. We actually just finished one. Sorry, this keeps dropping. We just finished one that we did for December because of Christmas and then January because of Lunar New Year. I know that's a big time when, you know, the city of Diamond Bar, because of its location, it's freeway adjacent. We do catch, we do catch these burglars on occasion, and they come from, they're not local. You know, they're coming from Los Angeles. They're coming from San Bernardino. It's very easy to drive over here to see the nice big homes. And then they get off the freeway and they commit a burglary. Having the cameras, the neighbors, when they are able to catch the cars, you know, the city of Diamond Bar also recently invested in the flock camera system. I can tell you that that has had positive results. We've been able to locate cars. We just had a recent, we passed along a vehicle to our major crimes bureau from a burglary that happened. They were able to, I mean, it's still an ongoing investigation, but they were able to put a tracker on it. It came to our area and it drove around the city for two cars, the track car and a second car. So it was two groups of people. They drove around the city for over 45 minutes, just driving down random streets, up and down, over until they finally, however they decide. I don't know how they decide, but they finally picked a house and they burglarized it. So targeting, I, you know, my neighbors also feel like when it happens that we're targeted. I don't know if they're targeted and if they're watching specific cars, if they're watching specific houses. I think they're just looking for specific things. And when they see it, that's what they hit. In this particular instance, the car was able to get to the freeway. A chase occurred and the vehicle escaped, although it crashed. And multiple people ran from the vehicle. And we're still trying to investigate who's in the car. As far as overall crime goes, so we track all of our crime throughout the year. And over the last, for just an example, over the last five years in the city of Diamond Bar, we average part-one crimes. So those crimes are going to be homicide, rape, robbery, assault, burglary, larceny, which is theft, grand theft autos, which is stealing a car, and arson. And burglary is going to be commercial burglary as well as residential burglary. Over the last five years, we average 989 part-one crimes. That's our five-year average. And that's also including the COVID years, which crime dropped pretty well on those years, especially 2020. But 989 crimes. This last 2024, we had 992 crimes. So it was an increase of three crimes over our five-year average. In 2023, we had 1,071 part-one crimes. So it was actually 1182 crimes more than our average. And then 2022, it was 1,064, and then 971, and then in 2020, it was 859. So on average, let's call it 980, like, let's call it 1,000 crimes that we expect to have in our city. This particular year, we did get hit with an increase in burglaries. Let's see. So in 2023, we had 287 burglaries. And this year, we had 343, or not this year, 2024, I'm sorry, we had 343. So 287 versus 343. And when you break that into residential and commercial, there was a significant increase in residential burglaries from 135 up to 216. But the good news is, other crimes went down. So our larceny thefts, so grand theft, theft from vehicles, GTA's, assaults, robberies. The robberies last year, or in 2023, were 21 robberies. That's taking something by force or fear. So having a gun pointed at you or, like, people, when their house gets burglarized, they call it a robbery. I was robbed. That's not a robbery. That's a burglary. Robbery is when someone is in front of your face and they're telling you, "Give me that or I'm going to hurt you." So we had 21 robberies in 2023, and we had 11 in 2024. So that's almost 50% decrease. Assaults also. Assaults is fighting, you know, whether aggravated or simple assault, went from 37 down to 22. So our total violent crime dropped from 68 in 2023 down to 38. So the, what I'm trying to say is that crime, the crime moved around, but the overall amount of crimes stayed in the 1,000 average. There is an increase in residential burgs, residential burglaries, and we are addressing that. You know, we have operations. We're using the flock cameras. We're using the extra money for the suppression. I want to reassure everyone that there are deputies out there. There's deputies out there on every shift. Also, I have a printout of our crime mapping software. I just wanted to show. Oh, man, even with glasses. Okay. So for the year, burglaries, residential burglaries during the day was 54. Residential burglaries at night was 62. And burglaries of an unknown time, so it took longer than a day or a night for them to realize it, was 39. And then the crimes are happening Friday, Monday, Saturday, Sunday, Thursday, Tuesday, all the days.
And Captain, what timeframe is that?
That's the whole year.
Okay.
So it's happening at days. It's happening at night. It's happening during unknown periods of time. It's, you know, we're out there. We're doing the best that we can. We're using all available resources. We have Neighborhood Watch. We have Aaron Scheller, if anyone is interested in Neighborhood Watch. It is available to you. We have, Diamond Bar spends a lot of time on community outreach, community relations. If you don't know who Aaron Scheller is, you haven't been to any of the events because he comes to every event. So it's not that hard to reach out to the Sheriff's Department. They talked about playing music, leaving your lights on. All of those things are things that we're going to tell you to do. Those are all things that should be done. You should, if someone knocks at your door, you should answer that. You shouldn't ignore the call. You should, it should look like somebody's home. You know, we're the talk of the town. My wife thought a great idea would be to buy a mannequin. So I now have a mannequin that sits on my couch. It plays my piano. It stands in the kitchen. That's one of the things that my wife did to make her feel better is she set up a mannequin in my house. You know, any idea is a good idea if it prevents your house from being burglarized. The flock camera system is effective with the, when other people have cameras. They also talked about jammers. That is happening. That is something that is being done. They have wireless jammers because everyone has the wireless cameras now. So they will jam your cameras. They will turn off your electricity. So make sure you have, if you have, if you have surveillance or alarm systems, make sure that you have that power outage alert as well. If you get an alert for the power outage, you might want to take note of that. I know it's not a, it's not a ask questions type of thing, but if you guys have anything that you want me to hit on, I'd be willing to do it.
Thank you for your presentation. Any council member has a question?
Yes. Thank you, Captain, for being here. Quick question. So we've heard this from multiple residents about additional patrol. Can you speak a little bit to how you decide where and how much resource you dedicate to patrolling in our city? Thank you.
Right. So we look at, like I talked about earlier, the resources that we have is we have the special assignment deputies who read the reports every day. So every time, that's also why it's important. Like, if your car gets burglarized or you leave your car unlocked, you're like, "Ah, that was my fault. I left my car unlocked." I'm not going to call or report that. You need to call and report that because that's how we see the trends that are occurring. You know, we can't respond to something that we don't know happened. So if a crime happens, you need to call us so we can take the report. So then, when the report comes in and we run, we run the crimes in that area or we're reading the reports, we know, "Hey, this area's, you know, this had five, five cars got broken into last night." You know, that's, that's an area where we're going to go and we're going to make sure we're there the next night. We have the crime mapping. We have the crime mapping program as well. So any deputy can log on anytime they want and they can see. Hey, physics. So they'll be able to see on the crime mapper. We can put in any time period. So for instance, I put in, I put in the year, but it's already pre-done with three weeks. So it takes about three weeks to see a trend, right? I'm not going to see a one-week it takes about three weeks to see a trend, right? I'm not going to see a one-week trend. So after about three weeks, you go on and you log on, you see, oh, it'll tell you, like, you can see, I mean, it's really hard to see my map here. But it'll tell you day, it'll, we can dial it into time, day, hour. You know, we can see any kind of trend in any area. It'll tell you where in the city it's getting hit and what hours. So if we want to do a suppression, which a suppression, a suppression would be, we have detectives at our station, we have eight detectives. So if we see crime is occurring at a certain time, I can get all eight of those deputies in patrol cars, driving around at that particular time and try to catch whatever's happening at that time. So it's more getting out there, being seen and making sure we're there when the crime is happening. It's happened so fast and it happens day, night, that, you know, it's, do we need more deputies? No. I feel like the deputies that we have and the resource that you give us with the Flock safety, we have enough deputies. We're not, you know. The station overall, the department overall is low on deputies, but we have the deputies that we are contracted with and we fulfill the contract with the deputies. So it's not a deputy issue. It's, you know, we need the community. So when people talk about Neighborhood Watch, I'm all for it. That's how we catch the crime is Neighborhood Watch. So please get ahold of Aaron Scheller, get ahold of the station, we'll send somebody out to you, we'll help you get started. That's really how we stop and address the crime is through the community.
Thank you. Any?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Captain and residents. I got a couple of questions. I often hear that one of the best ways to fight a crime is to prevent it from happening and that has to do with a lot of prevention. That with the Neighborhood Watch. And so I often hear from residents that said sometime they would contact me and said, hey, we see a suspicious car just keeps on circling in here and they, I let them know the report that directly to the Sheriff's Department, the station. What do you, what does the Sheriff's Department, Station do with that information? They say somebody, it's, there's after the fact, they say somebody actually gets burglarized, but there is before the fact that they thinking somebody, a couple of cars that have been suspicious and keeps on circling.
Okay, great question. And that is an issue is suspicious, suspicious car, you know, how, what, what makes it suspicious is what they're going to ask. When you call and you say, hey, this person is suspicious, why are they suspicious? We need to have more than just suspicion to talk to that person. So we need, we need a little bit more help than that from the neighborhood. You need to say, hey, you know what? We have a Neighborhood Watch in this group. I know all the cars in my area, this car, I've never seen it before, it's been parked there, it's, it's ninety degrees, the windows are up and the guy is still sitting in the driver's seat. Or someone got out of the car and they started walking door to door and the other person's sitting at something where it's rises to the level where we can go make contact with that car. Just because you say the word suspicious, it doesn't really allow us to go make contact with that person.
Understood. So, very much. What would you say would be a good way to educate our public to be able to report that, to speak in that language as we see? Our residents see these suspicious cars or people?
I would say make sure you know who your neighbors are, have that Neighborhood Watch, you should know what your neighbors drive. You know, there's some times where it's a suspicious vehicle and we get there and it's the neighbor. You know, it's something like, how did you not know that was your neighbor when you've lived there for fifteen years? You gotta, you gotta get outside, you gotta talk to your neighbors, you gotta know what cars belong and what don't. And if something is suspicious, know why, other than just saying suspicious. You know, something about it made you go to the end of the street and go, something's not right, and turn around, what was it? And be able to explain that to the deputies. Be able to explain that so we could put it in the call, so then we can just, we can just drive up and make contact with that person. Hey, you don't belong here, why are you here? We don't want to, we don't want to hit up somebody who's living in the neighborhood or is the wrong race or color and that's why they were suspicious. It has to be more, there has to be something that they're doing that's suspicious.
Understood. Thank you.
Captain, Ms., Dr. Abdo says in her email that we have formed Neighborhood Watch groups, but to no avail. What, how do we, how do we guide them? How do we, how does the sheriff? And again, I don't know if that means that there's been a, you know, an Aaron Scheller-type Neighborhood Watch put together? Or if it's like you've just said, I know my neighbors, I know the cars, et cetera. What works for a Neighborhood Watch?
There's all different successes. In the city of Walnut, they have a Neighborhood Watch that is so sophisticated that they have Jeeps, that have magnets, they have drones, they have shifts that they sign up for and they drive around the neighborhoods and they will contact people that are parked. And then, I mean, that's, that's extreme Neighborhood Watch, but that's what they've resorted to because they feel they weren't safe. Neighborhood Watch is just getting, getting in contact with us. We will set up the Neighborhood Watch for you. We will flyer the neighborhood. If you don't know your neighbors and you want to start one, you want to be a block captain, we will meet with you and we will flyer the neighborhood for you and set up the first meeting, give you all the necessary documents, not documents, but all the different flyers and ways to keep your home safe and get you started and do that first introductory meeting with your neighbors so that you guys can then take it forward and continue knowing your neighbors. That is the key.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'm so sorry. I know this is a public comment, but this is so important. I feel like this is what we're elected to do is to make sure that our communities are safe. So I want to, I do want to touch on public safety, specifically Neighborhood Watch. So I did set up Neighborhood Watch on my block after the neighbor across my street was burglarized. We contacted Deputy Scheller. I just want to talk about the process, how easy it was. I contacted Deputy Scheller, he came out, he fliered the neighborhood for us. And we had a meeting literally in my driveway, he pulled up a trailer with the TV and he showed us what he meant to have a Neighborhood Watch. I think a lot of times people think of the term Neighborhood, they think it's something very formalized, you have your board meeting and all that. It's literally, we have, I think fifteen houses on my block, I happen to live in a cul-de-sac. We literally started a text chain with everyone's text phone number on that text chain. And, and I kid you not, one time, two guys showed up behind my block, I feel bad for them actually. Two guys showed up claiming that they couldn't find their AirPods and they were using Find My Phone and they traced their AirPod to a house on my street. I feel bad for them. About fifteen houses lit up and everyone's watching them as they were going from house to house, knocking on doors, claiming to be looking for AirPods. I called the deputy, I called the sheriff off myself. They actually showed up and going back to, you know, how to speak to the deputies, I told them specifically, there are two guys, this is what they're driving, this is what they look like, this is exactly what they're doing, they don't, I know for a fact they don't live in my block. Because I know every single neighbor. So I know for a fact they don't live here and they're going door to door. It was eight-thirty on a Saturday night. It's just too weird. So, you know, once you provide all that information, and I made sure I stayed on the phone, I gave a description of the car and told them where it was parked, what they're doing, minute by minute. And within fifteen minutes, I said ten minutes, they showed up and they talked to the guy, yeah, sure enough, they're looking for AirPods. But the, but the point is, our neighbor was on it together, we had fifteen sets of eyes on them and they were not going to get anywhere. So that's really kind of the function, the beauty of a Neighborhood Watch. It's not really formalized and the deputies, for the most part, will not come out and have a meeting every month with everybody. It's really up to you to safeguard your block. That, that's what we're, hopefully that we're all committed to do. So thanks for bringing about the Neighborhood Watch. It's really affected for my block.
Thank you for sharing that. And Councilmember Lo.
Thank you, Mayor. Captain, thank you for your comments. Let me just share that the speakers that came and talked about the burglary, I hear you. My home was burglarized as well. I was at work and when I came home, my back door was, my back window was broken. Every room was turned upside down, the mattresses were flipped on its side and all the drawers were on, everything in my drawers were on the floor, you couldn't even see the floor in every single room. So I hear you. It is, it is a horrible feeling. And, and I think a lot of us have had that same experience. But Captain, what you were saying about making, and I have attended some of the Neighborhood Watch organization, organizing meetings. And in my block, I had not as positive experience as you, Councilmember Chow. I contacted the neighborhood, I knew a neighbor who I knew was burglarized and I tried to talk to them, hey, would you like to talk about a Neighborhood Watch? And they shut me down. And I think that's, you know, it might be a reaction that they were, they didn't want to share or they were embarrassed or they didn't want to be further vulnerable or exposed. So that's also another, another reaction. So for the speakers that spoke, the fact that you got a Neighborhood Watch and you guys got going and you contacted each other, that is really awesome. And, and I'm also a prosecutor and I know what is required when the, at the other end, when our deputies actually do find somebody. And even before that, before they make contact, as the captain says, we just can't go up to people and say, hey, what are you doing here? That's not okay, that's not our system. We have to, our law enforcement have to have some reasonable suspicion to contact them. Because if it was, if the shoe was on the other foot, we don't want to be quote-unquote bothered by somebody thinking we're doing something untoward. So we have to kind of balance of when we see something that is suspicious, not just suspicious, but we have to have reasonable suspicion. So it's kind of a legal term and so when you talk to the officers, give enough information. And I know it's easy to say, oh my God, they're here, they're here and they're doing this and they're doing that. But, you know, by having the Neighborhood Watch, we share, we educate ourselves of how best to help ourselves. I'm sorry that, that a lot of times we have to take it upon ourselves, like you have to have the mannequin. I think that's a great idea. I think I'm going to get the mannequin too. But that we have to do this. But in this day, we hear about gangs coming in and making a concerted effort to organize and be, we used to say in court, if the, if the bad guys would just channel their smartness to doing something good, our world would be in such a great place because some of them are so smart. But that's not the case. And we have to sometimes help ourselves. So thank you for your report. I hope that maybe we can sit down and brainstorm other ways that we can share about how we can help ourselves and we can help our neighbors because we are a great community and that's what makes that. And to the extent that we have the funds to support your deputies and extra patrols, you know what? That's what it's for. Let's do it. Thank you.
I would like to say one more thing about, I forget who talked about it. They said they tracked the car to two blocks away and the deputies did nothing. A car is not the person. So you're talking about the prosecution at a later time. If the car drives away and we have no pictures, these people are wearing masks. If that car gets out of that location, they are going to say, my buddy gave me this car five seconds ago. We met at the gas station and then I got in the car. You know, it takes an investigation to actually get them for the burglary. So just because the car is one city away and if we don't have a picture of the suspects, it really is not going to, it's not going to do anything in court, it's going to die in court. We have to prove that those people entered the house. Not even that they were nearby, they could have been in the car, we have to figure out who went in and that is the burglar. So it does take an investigation to get these people locked away for a long time.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Well, I have the comments because I believe that this kind of a burglary, burglary crime, breaking crime is general, it's not just the Diamond Bar area. I happened to check some of the statistics of some of the city. All of a sudden, I thought about those cities, so I go online, check their statistic data. And lo and behold, all these cities suffer from significant burglaries generally this year. Every week they have a report and every day they seem to have a report of burglaries in their city. That's the first thing. The second thing is that there's a recent news of catching up a group of criminals doing the burglaries in California. I think that's very encouraging. I hope that maybe one of these days, some of the, these criminals will be identified as having come into our area, have done the burglary cases. But these criminals are all in groups, they are all driving two cars, one or two cars together and they seem to all from, quote, foreign nationals. Also, I think, I'm hoping that there are more catching up of these criminals in the future. The second is I have a question for you that, I know that they usually drive cars with stolen license to come to our city. And is our Flock system able to catch up the stolen license so immediately alert our sheriff that some suspicious car is coming here so that we can send people to patrol that area? And is that possible, Captain?
That is the major issue, that the incident I spoke of, where the person drove around the city for over forty-five minutes before breaking into a house. Prior to breaking into the house, they pulled over to the side of the road and switched plates with a car. So that, yes, that license plate would have come back stolen if it was caught, but it also would not have yet been reported. So what they are doing is they're taking license plates off cars and keeping them for a day. So that license plate may not even be entered as stolen. So when we, when we get the car or we get a perfect picture of the car and we get the license plate, we start looking into it and all of a sudden, you know, you put in that, you put in that car and it's a black Honda Civic and then two weeks earlier, it was a black Honda Accord. And you realize, oh, man, they switched the plates two weeks ago or a day ago. The car changed, so obviously the plate changed. The Flock system itself does do emergency, it does do immediate alerts for stolen plates. So if the car is a stolen car, if it's a stolen plate, or if the person has felony warrants, it will alert us. So yes, it does, but the issue is the person has to know their plate is stolen and then enter it as stolen plate. And if you do get your plate stolen, do not put your stolen plates on your car. Because you will get pulled over and guns pointed at you. So if your license plate gets stolen, do not put that license plate back on your car. You need to talk to the DMV and get new license plates.
Thank you. Thank you. Is any other public comments in the audience? Or is any people online or on the phone want to speak to the council?
Thank you, Mayor. There was one email submitted for public comment by Ms. Noha Abdu, who already spoke. That public comment was submitted to the City Council and placed at the entrance to the meeting for public viewing. At this time, there are several members of the public online. If any would like to submit a public comment, please click on the raised hand icon in your go-to webinar program. And there were no hands raised, Mayor.
So we'll close the public comment. Thank you, Captain. We'll move on.
City Manager Fox, can you please announce the schedule of the upcoming events and then proceed with the council calendar?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. On the schedule of events, the Planning Commission will be meeting on Tuesday, February eleventh, starting at six thirty PM in the Windmill Community Room at City Hall. Coffee with the Cop, which is a great way to meet Deputy Scheller, will be held on Wednesday evening, February twelfth, from six to eight PM at Starbucks in the Target Center at the corner of Golden Springs and Grand. City Hall will be closed on Monday, February seventeenth, in observance of the President's Day holiday. And our next City Council meeting will be on Tuesday, February eighteenth, starting at six thirty PM here in the AQMB Auditorium. PM here in the AQMB Auditorium. On the consent calendar this evening, you have approval of the January 21st regular meeting minutes, approval of the check register dated January 8th through January 21st, second reading and adoption of ordinance number 012025 by Title only, which I will read, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Diamond Bar, California, amending various provisions of Title 22 Development Code of the City, of the Diamond Bar City Code to establish a housing element site overlay district to implement the general plan. Approval of the Second Amendment to the Consultant Services Agreement with Tortigallus and Partners to prepare water supply assessment for the Town Center specific plan, including an appropriation of $58,000 to cover the cost of the additional work. Adoption of a proclamation declaring February as Black History Month, and approval of a notice of completion for the Area 3 Residential Street and Arterial Street Rehabilitation Projects. That concludes the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Would anyone like to pull any items for discussion?
Mayor, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Actually, I do have a question. I want to pull 5.4, just a few comments.
I'll second that.
So we'll take a vote for the rest of the consent calendar. City Clerk Santana, please call for the vote.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Chow?
Yes.
Councilmember Liu?
Yes.
Councilmember Lo?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Tai?
Yes.
Mayor Tang?
Yes. Motion passed. Councilmember Chow?
Thank you, Mayor. And I did a question about the additional ask to appropriate $58,000 from the general fund to cover a water supply assessment. The question is, I, I think in the past, usually the, and my understanding is that the water supply assessment is part of the environmental impact report, the EIR. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Correct. And if I, I mean, I've been counsel for six years, but I don't recall ever having that part being paid for separate and part from the actual EIR. Was there a reason why this time we're paying for this separate from the EIR? Or why was it not, how come our consultant didn't include this in original proposal for the EIR?
I don't know that I have that level of information as far as why it wasn't included in the original scope of work. SEQUID does require that development projects of more than 500 units are required to have a water supply assessment prepared. And that is typically done by the applicant as part of that environmental process. And in this case, we are, the city is, is the applicant. We're trying to do the specific plan as a comprehensive document to master plan the area and provide as much environmental clearance as we can to address the major issues as we deal with incremental development of the individual properties. So I, I think that maybe initially, since we weren't physically developing the, the projects and we're kind of going through the zoning process, that maybe it was felt that we would be, the water supply assessment would be either deferred to a later stage, and we would be able to, or possibly look at the opportunity, since it's, we're treating it for mixed use development now, that there may be a trade-off of residential units for less commercial square footage. The Water District has, since we started the process, has come out and said, we really need you to do a water supply assessment. So it is kind of a late hit for us at this point. I think it's something that we still need to do, and it'd be prudent to do. Otherwise, we could run into challenges later in the process and end up with further delays. So apologize for the, kind of the late surprise on that. I think it kind of caught us all by a little bit off guard.
Thank you. And if I recall, based on the staff report, I believe the original appropriation was $920,000. And we did add additional funding to cover the specific plan development process. So now we have this additional $58,000 that the consultant's asking for. Do we anticipate any other costs that might come up that the consultant hasn't foreseen?
At this point, I don't believe so. We're gonna keep our fingers crossed as we go through the public hearing process and that there's no other additional work that's being asked for. So I, I think we feel pretty confident that this should, and that this should cover us as we get to the finish line on the project. And if I can just, you know, if you, if you recall that the original contract of the $920,000, that was really kind of funded through the ARPA offset money as part of our economic development strategy. There was an amendment that we added $185,000 a few months ago, which was really for the objective design standards that apply citywide. We're using the same consultant. It's unrelated to the specific plan, but since it was the contract, we did amend the contract. So the total amount is greater than that. Also, we did receive about $129,000 in grant funds to help offset some of those costs. So, you know, we're trying to do as much as we can to keep those costs under control.
Thank you. And one, I think, last question. So I think part of the process of EIR is to kind of streamline the process so that when a developer does come forth with a project, we can say that we've done a study, we've done the water supply assessment. So it should be a more streamlined process. Is that the hope?
That is the hope. That we have tried to analyze kind of the full build-out scenario. So if a developer, a property owner comes in with plans that kind of fit in that puzzle piece for their particular property, they have a much more efficient entitlement process to, to help them get underway much quicker. Absolutely.
And, and that's great, actually, because I was afraid that if we do the study ourselves and pay for it, at the end of the day, when a developer comes forth with a, with a plan, then they have to do the same study again. Would that not be the case?
That, that would not be the case. So they, the future development applicants and property owners would be able to take advantage of the environmental impact report, including all of the studies, the traffic study and water supply assessment, any of the other studies that are included within that.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. That's all the question I have. Then I'll move for approval of 5.4.
I'll second that.
We have a motion, we have a second. City Clerk Santana, please call the vote.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Chow?
Yes.
Councilmember Liu?
Yes.
Councilmember Lo?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Tai?
Yes.
Mayor Tang?
Yes. Motion carries.
So I'm sorry to do this again for probably the third time, Mayor, but I just wanted to point out, I'm not sure a lot of people are paying attention to schedule future events, but for the abdos, for Mr. Murrican, for Ms. Tren, the Wednesday, February 12th, Coffee with a Cop would be a great opportunity to sit down with Aaron Scheller and, and, and as discreetly as you can, as directly as you can, share with him what you've been through. And I guarantee you, you're gonna, it says it's from 6 to 8, but when Aaron gets talking, it could be a lot longer than that. So, I mean, what, what the sheriff has done is, is done a great job of, of moving Coffee with a Cop around the community so it's available to people. And, and I see, I think, for the first time I've ever seen, 6 to 8 PM at, at a Starbucks right in, at the Target, not in Target though, right? At the one, at the, by, that's a great, you could go to Crumble and you could...
Yeah, Crumbles, Jimmy John's, and Starbucks.
Everything's covered. So, but that would be a great place to take advantage of that and get some, some of your thoughts out with the sheriff and share it with him. So, thank you. Appreciate that, Mayor.
Thank you. I totally agree with you because I was in Big Los with Deputy Mendez, I believe, that he was doing the Coffee with a Cop last Saturday morning. It was very well attended. There's no seat. Many residents showed up, and I, I got a lot of very important informations there. So encourage everybody to attend one of these events. Thank you. We'll move on to the next session, which is a public hearing, and we have none. And next session is the City Council Consideration. City Manager Fox, please provide the report.
Our Assistant City Manager Ryan McLean will make the staff presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Tang, and members of the City Council and members of the community here tonight. The item before the City Council this evening is the consideration and approval of new solid waste services contracts for both the residential and commercial sectors. So a little background, Valley Vista Services is currently the city's commercial waste hauler, and Waste Management is currently the city's residential waste hauler. And both of these haulers have served the city in the same capacity in those sectors since the year 2000. The city has worked with both haulers to amend and restate these agreements on multiple occasions. Essentially, what that means is that we revised those contracts and renewed them, negotiating directly with the haulers for the same sectors in each of those restatements and amendments. The contracts that are current and were most recently amended in 2017 are due to expire on September 1st of 2025. And so the City Council directed staff to begin the procurement process exclusive to the existing haulers. So a little bit about that procurement process. With the council giving us the parameters to negotiate exclusively with the two haulers, but open up the procurement to either sector, staff proceeded to enter into an agreement with the consultant, Sloane Vasquez McAfee, to develop an RFP. That RFP went out in May of 2023, and simultaneously, the council approved an extension to the agreement per the contracts so that we could get through, up till September of this year to facilitate the procurement and negotiation of the contracts. On October 30th of 2023, the city received the proposals from each hauler. Both haulers, based on their experience over 25 years, and the RFP proposals that were submitted were found to be qualified to meet the scope of the RFP that was solicited and provided with proposed competitive rates for consideration. On January 16th of 2024, the City Council met and considered options that were submitted in the RFP responses. There were four options that the City Council considered. The council deliberated and ultimately directed staff to prepare contracts with Valley Vista Services for residential service and Waste Management for commercial service. So essentially, the sectors were flipped based on the council direction. Once we received that direction from the City Council, we worked with the city attorney's office and representatives from each of the haulers to negotiate the final contract language, which will be presented to the council this evening. So we'll get into some of the details that are included in the contracts. We'll talk about the term. We'll talk about general services that are provided, and that's what the next several slides will be about. We'll start with the term of agreement. If the council chooses to approve the agreements that are before them this evening, it would be a 10-year term. It would commence on September 1st of this year and terminate on August 31st of the year 2035. Similarly to previous agreements, the city retains an option to extend these agreements for up to 24 months beyond the established termination date of August 31st, 2035. Ultimately, this agreement could go if the 24-month extension periods were exercised through 2037. So now we'll get into some of the general services that our haulers provide to residents and business customers. And we'll, the next slides, again, will cover a sampling of those. We'll start with the basics, and that is compliance with all state diversion requirements in both sectors, including organics collection and recycling. In recent years, the state has increased mandates related to recycling, organics recycling, diversion requirements. Those are the city's requirements to meet. And so we have to make sure that our haulers are able to meet those requirements. We're ultimately responsible to the state and CalRecycle to ensure that we are meeting those mandates. In the course of the RFPs, we were making sure that the haulers could respond to those mandates and make sure that they could complete them on our behalf. Of course, the haulers will provide standard cart bin and roll-off services to customers depending on the sector and their needs. There will be free residential refuse cart overage collection, two per year. Cart and bin cleaning services are available upon request at a cost. Backyard service is free for disabled customers and available at a cost for those that just wish to use that service. Bulky item collection, up to four times per year. Household hazardous waste pickups, two per year. Free curbside used oil filter collection is available on regular collection days. There's also free mail-back Sharps collection programs. And these are all services that we've negotiated over the years with our haulers that provide extra benefits to customers. It's always nice when you don't have to travel across the county to deliver household hazardous waste or get assistance with a bulky item pickup. Our haulers, as, as part of terms of the contract, provide those services to our customers. In addition, there's free holiday tree collection service for natural trees, free mulch and compost giveaway events, two per year. And we also have additional self-service at Sycamore Canyon Park if you need to pick up any mulch or compost. We have collection and disposal of construction and demolition. So if you are doing a house renovation and you've demolished certain sections of the home and you need to dispose of those, our haulers can provide that service as well. We have complimentary service at city facilities, events, and activities, collection of abandoned items left in the right-of-way. Our haulers do assist us when somebody decides to leave a mattress out and maybe they didn't call for one of the bulky item pickups, we can get some assistance through our haulers. I would remind everyone, if you do need that service, our haulers do provide it. So before you abandon it on the side of the road, call your waste hauler that, that provides service, and they'll be happy to help you. In addition to the previous slides, our haulers help us out with free storage containers that we use at various city facilities. We have terms in the contract that require robust community outreach and education programming. And like we do with the city's community relations engagement and outreach, that includes a variety of different mediums, print, digital, social media, and so forth. And as usual, we'll collaborate with them to ensure that the messaging meets our requirements. Our haulers will assist us with promotion of local environmental events and programs. Haulers will be required to deploy new clean fuel vehicles when they start their, their service. Senior and disabled customer discounts of 15% will remain part of the contract, and those account holders that have those already should see that service continued, even when the account switches between haulers. Our haulers are also committed to meet the mandatory procurement requirements of SB1383. This is one of those state mandates in which the city must meet a formula-established procurement target for recovered organic waste products. And the intent behind this is to start to drive a sustainable green economy using organic waste. And so the haulers have committed to assist us in meeting that procurement requirement, whether it's through procurement credits, deployment of compost and mulch throughout the city, and through the events, or the use of renewable gas, natural gas in the vehicles. And there is a split between the two haulers based on the size of the sector. A little bit about the two sectors that will be served by Valley Vista and Waste Management. We'll start with the residential sector. This is the largest sector in Diamond Bar. There are over 13,000 single-family housing accounts. There are a few multifamily accounts, 16 of those that represent about 2,500 households. This means that the residential sector makes up about 98% of total customer accounts and almost 86% of the housing units across the sectors. Looks like our radar isn't working here. There we go. The commercial sector, commercial sector, of course, is mostly the business side. It does include some multifamily accounts, 269 commercial accounts, 31 multifamily accounts with about 2,600 individual housing units. The difference here is that these housing units use bin service as opposed to cart service. So this is a much smaller sector. It represents about 2.2% of accounts, but 14 and a half percent of residential units. And it's important to remember again, because a lot of the multifamily accounts have one master... And it's important to remember again, because a lot of the multifamily accounts have one master account, let's say an HOA that manages all of that, there's less accounts, but it still accounts for, as you can see, over 2,600 residential units. There we go. So let's get down to the rates. There are reduced rates as a result of the procurement process. One way to look at this is in the aggregate, and that's what this slide does. So when we look at rate revenue, this is the total amount of revenue that is generated by rates. On the residential side, we currently, our haulers generate a little over $7.1 million in revenue. Based on the rates that were proposed through the RFP process, that revenue drops to about $6.38 million. That's almost an 11% drop. That means that the cost to the rate payer is less because the lower rates generate a lower aggregate total for residential rate revenue. The same goes for the commercial side. So you'll see that currently, the rates that are in place today generate a little over $2.5 million in rate revenue on the commercial side. That drops a little over 7% to $2.32 million. Overall, when you look at this, it's an overall, on both sides, residential and commercial, a drop in rate revenue of a little less than $1 million or about 9.8%, close to 10%. Now, looking at rate revenue in aggregate gives you a really high level. There are dozens of rates that are included in this based on the different services that one might need, whether you're on the residential or the commercial side. For purposes of this presentation, I've distilled these down to a couple of pretty regularly seen examples. And so when you see this slide here for the residential rate example, this is for basic cart service in a, in a single-family unit or a multifamily unit that uses cart service. Usually people use a 64-gallon bin. You'll see that the current rate for a 64-gallon bin is about $39.50. That, in the proposed rates, drops about 10.5% to $35.39 per month. And the same goes for the other examples here, for 35 and 96. You'll see that there's a corresponding reduction in rates for those services as well. Moving on to the commercial side, one of the most common things that we see used is a three-cubic yard bin serviced once a week. You'll see the current rate there is $279.88. There's a significant drop in that service in the proposed rates here with smaller, as, smaller reductions as you go up in the volume of service per week. Consistent with the current contracts and those that are in place in other cities, haulers do have the ability to request annual rate increase. These rate increases in the proposed contracts that are before the council tonight are based on a standardized formula that takes into account the different business factors that go into the costs. So changes in disposal rates at the landfills, labor changes, or labor cost changes, fuel increases, and other factors that go into just providing business in this field. And so we use that standardized formula on an annual basis to adjust rates to ensure that they can continue to meet costs. Those annual rate increases are capped at 5%. And so even if the disposal rates, labor, fuel, the standard inputs go up, the rate increases are capped at 5%. Now, there is also a provision, and this is another one that is fairly standard in previous contracts that have been considered and approved by the City Council and in other jurisdictions as well, that haulers may request extraordinary rate adjustments based on changes in the law or something that requires service that was not originally included in the RFP and the contract. One example of this that I think stands out is something like SB 1383, which was adopted in the midst of the last waste agreements. That required the rollout of organics recycling. And so in a case like that, that's something where a hauler may request an extraordinary rate increase. The onus is on the haulers to provide the justification for that rate increase. And ultimately, it is subject to the approval of the City Council. The contracts before the council this evening include different fees and funding provisions that are paid to the city by the haulers. We expect approximately $1.6 million in year one. There are annual inflationary adjustments that are included each year to ensure that we do not fall behind inflationary factors. These fees are collected to administer the agreements, to offset staff and consulting costs, meet state mandates, and mitigate service impacts on city infrastructure. We'll start with franchise fees, which start in year one at about $410,000. There is language in the agreement to preclude the haulers from passing the cost of this particular fee onto the customer. There is a split between the haulers to get to that franchise fee total. In this case, Valley Vista will start by paying $287,000 and Waste Management $123,000 in year one. And that's how you get to that total of $410,000. The agreements also include a CalRecycle compliance fee of $750,000. This is primarily in place to cover the city's costs for staffing, consultants, programs, and events that are necessary to meet state mandates like AB 939, SB 1383, and so on. And I'm sure there will be more to come in the life of this agreement. We have a residential vehicle impact fee. Obviously, the trucks that are necessary to provide waste hauling services are heavy. This fee of $175,000 in year one helps to offset any street improvement costs or any damage caused by the heavy machinery. There's also a residential street sweeping fee that is paid annually to ensure that there's any impacts related to the collection of solid waste in our streets is taken care of by our street sweeping contractor. And then finally, there is a contracting fee. This is a one-time $100,000 fee that goes towards helping the city offset the consulting costs that went into getting to this point, development of the RFP, the time spent necessary to negotiate, and so on. There are also, of course, in a contract of this magnitude and with the number of resident and business customers that are impacted by it, certain clauses related to accountability. The first one is defined and ongoing monthly and annual reporting requirements. These are standardized. We've worked with staff and consultants to ensure that we're getting the information we need to ensure that the diversion rates are being met, that we have compliance with AB 939, SB 1383, and any other CalRecycle requirements. There is a provision that the haulers, upon the city's request, can fund and conduct a customer service satisfaction survey. There are performance audits that are paid for by the haulers that are included here at the city's request. And the last one is liquidated damages. And this is if something goes really wrong. There are financial penalties associated with specific breaches of contract. I touched a little bit on the ongoing outreach and engagement that is a requirement of these agreements. Obviously, when we're dealing with 18,500 different addresses, it's important to make sure that we have good communication channels available with those customers and businesses. But the outreach and engagement that is discussed here is more related to the transition. So we have about six, seven months or so until this transition takes place. It's going to require a comprehensive and extended outreach program to facilitate the transition as cleanly and as effectively as possible. And so we are going to work with each of the haulers and our community relations team to get the word out and to provide information to our residents. Keep in mind, this is the first time in 25 years that there's going to be a change in haulers. People probably know phone numbers and have had longstanding accounts and maybe even know some of the people that are providing the service. It's going to be a little bit different, and so the communication and noticing of this change is important. And we will work very closely with the staff of the waste haulers and our community relations division and environmental services staff to ensure that the word is out. We're going to start rolling everything out in April and we'll continue to work through September until everything is in place and up and running. In addition to the accounts, I'd be remiss if I didn't state that there's going to be a switch out of carts even. And so that too will require some notice and preparation on behalf of everyone. And we're committed to trying to make the process as smooth as possible. And so with that, staff's recommendation is to approve the agreements with Valley Vista and Waste Management. Valley Vista, of course, for residential service and Waste Management for commercial service, and authorize the city manager to sign said agreements once approved. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you for your report. Is any comments or questions or discussion from council members?
Okay.
As a member you?
Oh, public comments first? Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. McLean. And I have a question on, we have over 1,300 homes. In the transitional process, each home has about three different containers that are out there. How, is there a framework or specification that we need to go, the two haulers need to follow so no residence gets left behind with, with containers and/or gets trash picked up?
Yes, we'll be working closely with each of the haulers. The haulers will share customer information so that there's a good idea of what, you know, services are generally needed by customer. And we'll work with them to ensure that those switch outs of the carts or bins are handled in a way that is smooth and organized and ready.
Thank you.
So, sorry, I missed the asking the public comments. So is there any public comments in the audience or online or over the phone? There's a public comment. Can you please come forward and introduce yourself?
Yeah, in terms of switching over, do we have to apply for a new account or the accounts automatically get transferred?
I believe that we'll be able to cleanly transition those accounts between the two haulers. I don't know exactly at the moment, as we speak here, how that process will go. Once this contract is complete and approved, we're going to immediately start working with the haulers to iron out those details. But it is our intent to make it as simple as possible. And if there's a way to do it so that you don't have to reapply, that's the way that we'll go. And I'm pretty confident that we'll find a way to do that.
And the bins will be changed to Valley Vista as well?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Can you, excuse me, can you identify yourself just for the record?
Sure, Tarek Abdul.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comments in the audience or online? One guy, please come forward.
Yeah, actually personally, I don't like the surface of Western Ways. You know, there are times that they miss the collection. There are times, well, for example, one time, we, we, we put some branches in plastic bag and then put it in the, and put it in the container, right? They don't like the plastic bag, you know, they refuse to collect it. So personally, I just don't like Western Way. I hope we have an alternative.
Thank you. Is there any other public comments? Seeing none, we'll close the public comments and we'll go to the council members below.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of questions. Good, great presentation, Mr. McLean. Actually, I had questions and you answered most of them, so thank you very much for that. Just a few more, though. Under accountability, do we have, if there was an issue, is this, is the monitoring of this contract, the public works or is it city manager's side?
Our environmental services team within the city manager's office is responsible for contract administration. It's been that way for probably 15, 20 years at this point. So the city manager's office and the environmental services team will be in charge of oversight. We will likely bring in, as we have in the past, a consultant to provide at least a little bit extra background and expertise when it comes to some of the finer details. But it's going to be the same team that's been monitoring the past, you know, 20 years or so.
Okay, great. So, so we have a go-to person or a go-to department? If, if things are, if there's stuff to be ironed out on this contract, then?
We do, and if there's an issue with a cart transition, you can call me.
Okay, great. I totally agree with you that there will be more state mandate changes, mandated changes within the next 10 years, totally, totally foreseeable. Do we have a process built in to, to take care of the extraordinary high rate increases that are, I'm assuming it's over and above the yearly increases that, that we talked about earlier?
It is. That extraordinary rate increase adjustment process is outlined in the agreement. And it is indeed something that is not contained within the standardized formula. The hauler has to provide justification for the increase. And then ultimately, the City Council can consider that and make a decision.
Okay, okay. And then I'm just really happy that with the new contract, that, that overall, everyone in the city will realize savings. It'll be less money for, you know, out of pocket, which is kind of a great thing. Not to be greedy, but is there a military discount on, built into this contract?
I believe the contract is silent on that particular.
I see. Okay, well, thank you. That's my question. Thank you.
Council member, ciao.
Thank you, Mayor. Do you have two specific questions about the rates? So one's on the extraordinary rate increase. So I understand so much like what kind of electricity company going to have to go to PUC to ask for increase. So if they come to us and ask for increase, and we ultimately decided that we don't agree, what happens at that point?
It's ultimately at the discretion of the City Council based on the terminology in the agreement.
Right, so what does that, what does that say? So if we don't agree to the increase, what happens?
There are additional provisions in the contract for further discussions with the city. Like there's mediation. Ultimately, if a contractor cannot raise sufficient money to provide a service, then it could cause a problem with the service moving forward. So, but the extraordinary rate increase provisions do require the contractor to, or the hauler in this case, to provide justification. So it's going to come down to whether they can provide justification that in fact, they need the additional revenue in order to provide the service. In other words, there's provisions for mediating, for having additional discussion.
Go to mediator at that point?
Yes.
Because we certainly don't want trash piling up, so thank you. Seconds on the annual 5% increase. That 5%, if I read it right, it's a cap, it's not a...
Correct. This is based on CPI and a formula. It's not the regular CPI for purposes of the rate increases. It takes into account many different variables that deal with, for example, fuel and regulatory fees and, and products. So, you know, unlike individual families, they are subject to different price changes that affect their specific, their specific work that they do and services that they provide. And we take all of that into consideration in these rate increases.
And is that annual increase statutory? Meaning if they come to us and say, here's the CPI, here's the thing, that we have to approve it?
Yeah, yes. So our consultant will take a look, make sure that whatever they're plugging in is in fact correct based on, you know, based on government-published CPI and other, other indices that are listed there. And if, you know, basically, we just make sure that in fact, those have in fact raised or they're using the formula correctly, and then they will be automatic.
And when, if that happens, I assume the council will be notified, at least FYI, basically?
There is a provision to notify, not just the council, but also the customers. I believe it's 30 days in advance.
Okay, all right. Thank you so much.
And this is something that has taken place each year of the current contract. So for 12 years now, these adjustments have been made, I think with one exception. for 12 years now, these adjustments have been made, I think with one exception.
Got it. Thank you.
Council member Liu, do you have any comments?
Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. So the bins, you know, to Mr. Abdo's question, actually, I think it was about account numbers, but the bins, wouldn't, wouldn't the haulers be the first to know that a resident or a commercial account needs a new bin? Like, I'm, I have Waste Management at my home, and my Waste Management bins go down, and they keep coming up and down. So Valley Vista would know something needs to be done here, right?
I'm sorry, I'm not understanding.
So how are they going to be taken care of? You, you said if a resident doesn't get their, their bins traded out, how, I mean, the, the carriers would know that.
Yes, they're going to use account data and customer data as a baseline, right? So they're going to say, okay, we know that there are 17,000 properties that have three 64-gallon bins, a trash, a green waste, organics, and a recycling. And that will be kind of what they use to start with. But there's probably going to be a few glitches in there.
Sure.
And so we'll have to work with them to ensure that we get the change out in place. I know that the haulers have already had some initial discussions about that customer data so that they can start preparing now to get ready for the transition.
So that was my next question, is how simple is it, and it doesn't seem simple now that I've written it down, that account, again, to Mr. Abdo's question about account numbers. So it's highly unlikely that that's going to mesh really easily. So wouldn't it be capable that Waste Management can provide account number info and to Valley Vista and vice versa? Or is that, maybe that's a question we should ask them, is, is that just a stupid question?
Similar to the swap out of bins, they're likely to use customer information, you know, address, service information. Whether or not the account number will be the same, I doubt it, but essentially, it's transitioning that account to the different hauler and then setting up said account with the new rates and any other services that they might require. And so that process is, is likely to be done using the data that each hauler has and transitioning that data between them, and then working to fill in any gaps that may exist. And so it's going to be a joint collaborative effort between the haulers and the city to get us there.
I agree with that. And again, thank you for a terrific presentation, very, very comprehensive and understandable. Appreciate it.
I do not have any comments. Any other council member will have additional comments or not? Nope. Seeing none, then we're going to call for any motion?
I'll motion. I'll motion to approve and authorize the city manager to sign agreements with Valley Vista Services and Waste Management Collections.
I'll second.
And Recycling, thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't realize you're not done yet. Sorry. I second that.
So we have a motion, and we have a second. City Clerk Santana, can you please call for the vote?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Council member Chow?
Yes.
Council member Liu?
Yes.
Council member Lo?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Tai?
Yes.
Mayor Tem?
Yes, motion passed. Thank you. Next session is council subcommittee reports and meeting attendance reports, council members' comments. So we are going to start with council member Chow.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, staff, for very in-depth analysis. You okay there?
I think so. I don't know. I'll let you know.
Forgot what I was going to say. Huh?
Mine's gone. Go ahead.
Just happy Chinese New Year, Lunar New Year, I'm sorry. And then we, I totally lost my train of thought, but, but I'm glad we're moving the city forward. I'm glad the captain was here to give us a report on burglary. I do want to reiterate that we do take your comments to heart, that a lot of us personally have shared the same experience. So do not think for a moment that we're just, you know, just, we, we do take this very seriously, and there are resources that we have, and we're dedicated and allocate as much as we can, and with the help of the captain and his entire staff, I can assure you, this is very important to all of us. So do not think for, for a second that we're taking all this for granted. So thank you, Emma. Good night. Thank you.
Council member Lo, do you have any comment?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. First of all, again, I really thank the part, the people in the audience for sharing your experiences and you bringing your concern to the city council. We really do want to hear from you, and we really do try our best to address your concerns. That's what we're here for. And we have to work together to make it, make our city the best it can be. I want to thank Valley Vista and Waste Management for their participation in this arduous process in getting this waste hauler agreement done. Thank you for working with our city staff and, and just your services over the years. We really appreciate the, the good service that you've given to us, and we look forward to another 10 years of working together. And, and thank you for the, the, the savings that, that's being offered to our citizens. So we're really happy about that, and of course, your participation in our community as good citizens. This last, earlier this week, I attended the Capital Projects Subcommittee meeting, and I have a few photos to share with you as a result of that meeting. As you know, the Capital Projects Committee is a part of the San Gabriel Valley Council of Government, and they are responsible for the 5760 Confluence Project that, that you see every time you go on the 60 freeway. So I will try my best to narrate this, these photos. This one is a photo of the construction of sound walls along the eastbound 60 freeway. So the, the sound walls are kind of, what they're building is, if you're looking at the center of the photo, it's just to the left of where the freeway, number one freeway starts. So they're building the sound wall, and the other side of the freeway is to, to give a buffer to the residents who are on the other side of the 60 freeway, a buffer against the, the noises. So that is going up that you'll see on a daily basis. So next is, this is the retaining walls along the northbound 57 freeway. So you kind of have to reorient yourself, but this is the part of the freeway that I think it goes by the, the Ayers Hotel, and this is the retaining wall. Next, this is the construction of the Grand Avenue Bypass Bridge, and this is, they're working on the drainage and substructure. It's all underground work, and this is actually very, very important because it has to support the bridges, the bridge when that finally goes up. So that's the work, and on the right-hand side of the photo, you see our golf course. So to kind of orient you as to where we're looking at, this is the 60 freeway. And then finally, this is the construction of the Golden Springs Drive Undercrossing Bridge Widening Project. So this is the Golden Springs Boulevard, which is when you turn left from Grand Avenue onto Golden Springs where the Chili's is, and all the work on the right-hand side is what is depicted in this, this photo. And again, they're, they're doing the, the underground work. There was some work previously on the relocation of the utilities, and this is just the shoring to anticipate the widening of the off-ramp when they finally do their bridge. So the, the work is expected to be completed in 2027. So we've still got a way to go, and if there are any questions, if there are any issues, we have a hotline you can call, you can call the 5760 for questions, and if there are any issues resulting from the, from the construction of the freeway, call them so that they can be rectified. And wish everyone a happy Lunar New Year, for those of you who celebrate, and thank you for joining us tonight. Have a good evening. Good night.
Thank you for the report. Council member Liu?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank, thank your staff for the wonderful presentation. I think Valley Vista's and the Waste Management continue to partner with our city for providing our services, and now at least for a year, or a few years, is the lower cost than it was before. I appreciate that, and we appreciate our residents who are coming out and voicing your concerns, because residents are ice and ears of our community. It's very important that we stay vigilant, being out there and then sharing what we're seeing with our sheriff. Public safety, it is party number one for our city, and we'll continue to work through this and, and get stronger at this. Thank you. I had an opportunity to, the honor of emceeing the Congresswoman Linda Sanchez's Second Annual App Challenge. So we thank the Congresswoman for continuing to, to encourage our communities, to, to STEMs and our youth, and there were very, very many really nice apps. And one of the first things that the Congresswoman did was she had a award for a community impact. So the Community Impact Award was, what is it, for the kids within our community, in the District 38, the district that she serves, that really look into our community and, and come up with an app that help the, the neighbors and, and the community they're seeing in there that, that create the biggest impact. So oftentimes, when we look at, went in our communities and those coming up with ideas to serve our community the best, and what the people that closest to us, that, that's quite an amazing thing. So we congratulate all the kids for doing that, and say happy Lunar New Year for all that celebrate. And we do have a Lunar New Year, a celebration that's put on by a few organizations, including the Diamond Bar Chinese-American Association, that will be this Saturday, and, what's it, Saturday, Saturday at the Diamond Bar High School. Please come on out and, and enjoy the festivities and yummy food and all the, all the fun. So without, say good night. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll talk as long as I can have a voice here. Thank you to the Abdos, to Mr., I think he already left, Mr. Murican, Ms. Tren, the Maz for being here. This is how you are heard in, in a variety of ways, but it's great to see people, not only that have shown up tonight, but that stayed for the whole event. So thanks very much, but I can't, I can't stress enough that I, we heard the captain say it, you know what? If you see something, say something. And I can't tell you the number of people that I've, I've said that to, and they'll say, wow, you know, I, I saw that car there, I just didn't think I, I didn't think I should tell anybody. I didn't think I should call anybody. I didn't think anything would happen. Well, then, something might happen. So if you see something, say something. Be, be the eyes and ears of, of your, not only your home, but of, of your neighbors, and reinforce that for your neighborhood. Thanks again to Waste Management and Valley Vista Services. When you look at those numbers, you, you, at least for me, I look at that and go, wow, I see everything you're paying, how do you make any money? So thanks very, very much. And I think that the, the hidden thing is how generous Waste Management has been and Valley Vista Services has been to the community of Diamond Bar. Anytime that you go to concerts in the park, or you see the, the parties that, that the city puts on, when we ask them for help, they're, they're for help. Any, anytime you see the, the bins there, it's, it's one of our waste haulers. So again, thank you for everything that you do in our community to make our community a better place. With that, I'll say good night, and God bless you.
Thank you. Now, thank all the speakers coming today for sharing their thought about community safety. You know, that I have been using AI, ask them a question, ask the AI question, how can we improve our community's safety? How do, how do we combat the, the burglary, crime, breakings, et cetera? You know, the, the first thing, the first answer from the AI is that we need to have a good community engagement. So the, the first thing they recommend is to attend the meeting, to organize the things like the neighbor, neighbor watch, things like that. So this is the first thing they recommend, the, they recommend that people like me to have, when they, when we ask the questions on the AI. So that's very important, I think. People come here, does it, doing the engagement, and people go to the coffee with a cup, and I think you will find a lot of information there. You, you'll talk to other people, to, to talk to other residents in, in this area. You'll get a lot of information. That's all very helpful, and then you show your engagement in the community. So I definitely encourage everybody to engage in the community. And with that, I will say good night, and I will close the meeting at 8:32. Thank you. Good.
You are taking, taking vacation?
I'm going on vacation.
Yeah. You just came back. You just came back.